Okay, I will now call this meeting to order. We will begin tonight with an invocation. Jordan, would you mind with that? And then we'll be followed by a pledge. Paul, would you lead us in the pledge after that?
Our Father in Heaven, we are truly grateful to be gathered together today to review the issues before the city. Please bless us as we consider each of these items that we can be sympathetic to those that this will affect and please bless us that we can know the best path forward, that we can have wisdom granted from thee, and we are truly grateful for thy guidance in these things and ask a blessing upon all us, the citizens of Syracuse, that they can feel peace and understanding in a through these difficult times as we navigate economic troubles and continue to bless us. We can know the path forward and see the light at the end of the tunnel. These things we pray, in Jesus's name, amen.
Please rise.
And from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
Counsel, can I get a motion to adopt our agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, with our agenda going forward, item number two is recognition and presentation of the Utah Administrative Fire Officers designation to our Fire Marshal, Golden Barrett. And for any public in the audience, let me just note that we have more people who have done the certifications in Utah than any other department, and I'm very proud of that.
Yes. Thanks, Mayor, Council, for letting me have a little bit of time this evening. I'd like to invite Fire Marshal Golden Barrett up and then read you a little statement here. So nearly 15 years ago, the Utah State Fire Chiefs Association, supported by the Utah Fire and Rescue Academy and the Utah State Fire Marshal's Office, established the Utah Commission on Fire Officer Designation. It's a lot of Utahs. Since then, the commission has developed a three-tiered designation system for fire officers in Utah. The first level is supervisory fire officer. The second level is managing fire officer, and the third and highest level is administrative fire officer. I'm proud to report that of the 175 supervisory fire officers statewide, 13 are from Syracuse Fire. There are 15 managing fire officers statewide, with five of them being from Syracuse Fire. Tonight, we're here to recognize an extraordinary achievement. Golden Barrett has earned the title of administrative fire officer to the highest designation, the highest designation, and is only the second person in the state of Utah to do so. This accomplishment reflects thousands of hours of dedicated to leadership development through education, hands-on experience, certifications, and training across all three designation levels. Golden's achievement demonstrates not only his personal commitment to professional excellence, but also his deep dedication to serving the Syracuse community and supporting his fellow firefighters. Please join me in congratulating Golden on this outstanding accomplishment. They sent us with a nice little plaque and a pin that he will have for his uniform, and I'd like to give that to you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and this is a chance for you to bring forward something that you'd like the council to be aware of either on tonight's agenda or something that you'd like us to consider in the future. It is not an open discussion, but is there anyone here that would like to make public comment? Could please state your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Matt Swain. I'm one of the owners of the Shadow Point Shopping Center. And just wanted to take a quick minute during the public comment session here to discuss an item that's later on in the RDA agenda tonight. I just wanted to speak quickly about the situation there and also offer up my time to answer any questions during during that time when the RDA is hearing that item on the agenda to amend the current RDA agreement with relation to the Eos construction. Recognizing that there were two technical non-compliance issues within the RDA agreement, I'm here tonight to just talk through the position of the owner and hopefully talk through any concerns that you might have relating to our performance on actually delivering the Eos building to the city of Syracuse. As you can see, as you drive down Antelope Drive, you can see that all the building is moving forward, the walls are up, and it's obviously moving forward toward completion. We've made a very significant investment in the in the city and have tried really hard over the years to try to entice and anchor into the Shadow Point Shopping Center, which is kind of at the gateway of Syracuse City. And finally got one, and then it took years to actually get it built based upon COVID hitting, which dismantled the healthcare industry and also created chaos in construction costs and capital markets, et cetera, which delayed the project for years. The RDA, as it was outlined in the agreement, was instrumental and really the catalyst that allowed us to move forward on that project. And we wouldn't have moved forward without that agreement and and the joint cooperation with the city and the RDA. And so my hope tonight is that we can have a discussion and work through any concerns relating to those two technicalities, one of which was the fact that the 100% of the foundation wasn't in by a certain date. That obviously has been rectified, and we're showing good faith as moving forward and building the building. The second was the size and dimensions of the swimming pool. There was some changes during COVID with the Eos prototype and the prototypical building. So it is slightly smaller by only a couple of feet, but the the intent of the structure is in place, and I feel like we've we've put millions of dollars in good faith into the project in participation with the RDA. And would hope that we can agree to a simple amendment that would allow that RDA to perform as it was outlined to do initially. Again, we're here as long-term partners with the city. We've made a very significant investment based upon that agreement with the RDA, and I think the end result's going to be very positive. The city's going to get what they wanted, which is a full-service gym and swimming pool. And we're willing to perform. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel with public comment tonight? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Item number four, we have five items of common consent agenda. The first is proposed Resolution R 25-17 authorizing the mayor to enter to execute an interlocal agreement with Davis County for third-party building inspections. The second is proposed Resolution R 25-18 establishing a temporary free speech zone at Canterbury Park North. The third is proposed Ordinance 25-14 amending Syracuse Municipal Code Chapter 4.50.30 pertaining to hardship waivers for monthly charges for collection of solid waste, green waste, and/or recyclable materials. The fourth one is proposed Ordinance R 25-15 amending the Syracuse City Code Title VII, Chapter 25 pertaining to the regulation of fireworks and other ignition sources. And the last one tonight on our common consent agenda is proposed Ordinance 25-16 adopting Syracuse Municipal Code 4.35.225 regarding the new Happy Tales Dog Park. These have all been discussed in work sessions at great length and found to be unanimous support. Is there any that anyone would like to pull off common consent before we move forward? Seeing none, I would accept a motion to adopt these five items.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the items on the consent agenda as outlined in on the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, as expected. And item number five is consideration of possible action to authorize execution of a proposed development agreement between Syracuse City and Costco Wholesale Corporation. This has been something that's gone on for a great deal of time, and we just finally have the last version of that development agreement. I will open it up to counsel if you have any discussion before we consider a possible action here tonight. If there's no discussion, could I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go ahead and authorize execution of the proposed development agreement between Syracuse City and Costco Wholesale as listed in the packet.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that passes four to one. We'll move on to number six. Authorize administration to award contract to West Davis Corridor Aesthetic Improvements Project. Steve, thank you for coming forward. This is a project we've had on the books for some time and just barely getting through. The holdup's really been UDOT, folks, and I just want to be clear about that. The people that we've worked with, other outside of UDOT, have been great to keep on top of this. But as you can see, we have some budgetary issues, and so with that, we have to decide which options within this bid you would like to move forward with. Who would like to start the discussion? I will, if no one else will, and I will say that I think it's important that this project was always planned to use UDOT betterment money that was from the West Davis Project, and to do that, we are not going to be able to get the full measure of the possible bid. I am comfortable cutting the bison, not because I don't love them, but because they go over budget.
I feel like I feel like the sod.
Yeah.
Why aren't we just using natural?
I'm okay with that, too.
Yeah, like instead of using sod that we have to maintain, why can't, I mean, it's out there with bison. Why would we?
I agree with you. What falls under budget is the signs, including the bison and the Syracuse side. That is totally in budget, and I'm
I feel like all this extra, like, it's gonna take a lot more extra effort just to keep it maintained, rather than just use like natural native plants and wildflowers and things like that, which is free from the state, if you don't know that.
Well, and for that reason, I would agree entirely with you that the boulders and sod could be cut as well. The real issue is the extra bison that would be on the left-hand side of the exits.
So there would still be the bison by the sign?
Yes, the bison by the sign would still continue, but the bison on the hillside go over.
So if we get rid of the sod, can we get the other bison?
Not entirely in budget. If you look at the budget, the outline would still go over a little bit.
And the rocks, the boulders? Nix them.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting is.
Yeah, and then we get, I agree with that. I think I don't think the sod and boulders is necessary.
And those, the sod would be hard to add later, but the the boulders and the bison could be added at a later date.
Could.
It's so pointless, that sod. It's gonna, it takes so much to maintain in that area, and it the manpower alone that you're gonna have to use from now until we rip it out, because everybody's gonna get tired of it, probably. Look at Roy in Riverdale, they did, they pulled theirs out.
The sign and the area around the sign, I think, is the critical part, and I would I would lean towards making sure we have the sign at both exits as opposed to having the bison at the one exit. That's just my.
Sorry, which option is that?
Can we pull that?
I like the bison. It means.
I like that as well. I don't dislike.
Got bison everywhere. We love them.
I agree with you. It's a matter of what's in budget.
We need more bison.
Could we pull this up from the packet so that we can look at the?
I agree.
So that we can get the actual numbers, because I did not write them down outside of the packet.
I can, oh, I.
Oh.
Yeah, I've got them here, but you wanna talk to that?
Yeah, Cassie's pulling it up here.
Meadow grass irrigation, including filter control. It's grass. Oh, goodness.
So we would be over it. Yeah.
I don't think either of them say like what this.
So we can afford with the betterment money, the signs without the bison, the changes if you have the quartet bison in there. Without the holders, we would need 76,000 to make up the difference. To me, that's as far as I would.
That's without the boulders and?
Without boulders and sod.
But keeping the bison.
Keeping the bison.
I'm, and I'm for that.
Where are we pulling those funds from then?
And if we don't pull any funds, we eliminate the bison. So, because we do have.
We use impact fees on me?
I do not believe we can use impact fees on this, because this would be a freeway. Yeah. That wouldn't work.
This is one of those questionable moments when you know you gotta make the right decision, because you're like, it could be, but we're like, no.
Well, also, you need to do it.
Go ahead.
Chances are, you won't come back to it.
That's.
Add. So I think it needs to be done right the first time.
I agree. I agree with that, but I I don't think something that you're promoting, like Antelope Island is a nature reserve. I feel like the sod and the things, it's just excessive. It's like, let's get bougie with our nature reserve. Why?
Okay, so can we agree that the sod and boulders are unnecessary?
Yes.
Okay, I get a sense that that's that's the site.
But but even if we just go with the the extra bison, it's still an additional 76,000.
So that would be the question.
We'd have to know where we're getting those funds from.
Why do we need the boulder?
We don't.
Well, and isn't that something that could be brought in later, easier?
There's gonna be boulders. We can just have them reload.
The boulders can be easier brought in than sculpture.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I do have some information about the boulders, if you'd like me to share.
Yeah, go ahead, Noah.
So the boulders were a significant amount, if you look at the details of it. But we have been talking with Antelope Island. They have a construction project with their visitor center. There's a possibility that we might be able to
Get them for.
To get some for free.
Yes, please.
But that would, you know, that might include some creative thinking to be able to save that money, since we don't have equipment to transport it, but it's something that could be done after, is my point, and we may be able to get them for free.
Okay.
They they actually offered their timbers for the museum project because they're age-relevant for what they were doing. So they're really great about reusing stuff and not.
They've been awesome. They're really kind.
Incredible. Yeah.
I like that we have authentic boulders.
As opposed to what?
Non-authentic ones.
You're gonna mold it out of crate paper?
Authentic Antelope Island boulder.
We only use local boulders.
Local, locally sourced.
Locally relevant.
So.
With our natural grass.
Let me bring this back. I believe the only real discussion point is whether we do the additional quartet steel bison as were originally designed or not.
We do. I feel we should. Yes.
I feel like we should as well.
Where is the money?
Where's the money coming?
There they go.
Sorry, just to be clear, you're you're talking about option four, or you're talking about three without boulders?
Three without boulders.
Or sod.
Three without boulders, and then we find boulders.
Well, three without boulders for now.
But three without boulders, we have to come up with $76,000.
That's correct.
Where are we?
So that would be the second.
That's the question of the hour.
Will we take a motion?
76,000.
Yeah.
But they're like, these signs are gonna be there.
That's correct. They're very nice, and they have been a theme of ours.
Again, we need to have that.
So so the one place I know was we approved 50,000 for art in the roundabout in front of the fire station. If you wanted to make a trade and do this one now and that one later.
I feel like that's a good one.
Good suggestion.
It's gonna take them a while to get that roundabout in there.
No, it's.
You really wanna put art in there while they're building things, or we?
After. I just wanted to open with it, because if we.
Well, we put it in this budget.
Yeah, I doubt we'll use it before this one.
Do we have, okay, so let me point a clarification, because I know we have money from the Pid. Do we actually have money in our budget for that?
You're talking about the roundabout?
Steve, do we actually have money in the city budget?
For the Pid or for the?
No, for.
City budget?
City budget. I don't think we do.
Not without reallocating money. Probably the best best source would be your Capital Projects Fund. So it'd be using or postponing or changing priorities in that to do.
My, for the artwork comes from the Pid, which is not eligible to be moved, because that is specific to that property.
Yeah, Mayor, for the for the roundabout project, whether the city fronts some of the money for for design and that sort of thing should be reimbursed by the CRA.
Right, from the from the organization of the Pid. So that would not be eligible to be moved.
Different color of money.
Yes.
You you did previously talk about, to help you out with the $76,000, you did previous talk about maybe making amendments to the irrigated meadow grass. That would be an option.
I feel like that's probably reason.
You're saying in this bid?
This, right?
So you're saying option three without boulders, and then also take off the irrigation around the signs themselves, which we don't know exactly how much that will take off if that will be equal to 76?
So if you, I mean, if we end up using natural prairie grass, like that's out on Antelope Island, just that won't, that takes care of itself. You don't need to water-maintain it.
Yeah, Noah, I think we're, I think we're talking mainly the grass. Wasn't there gonna be grass around the bison?
Yes, the the plan includes grass around the bison on the side slope. And then it also includes grass and landscaping around the sign itself.
Sod or?
It's called bio-native sod. It's a native grass. It's not like Kentucky bluegrass that you have to mow. It's it's like wildflower stuff.
Okay, you got me there.
And I think.
But you lay it down and you have to.
Shut up now. It's fine.
It has to be irrigated.
Okay, so let's let me be clear. On option number two, that takes out the sign from that takes the signs off of 2,000. But in option three, they're in, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, because that's, I'm feeling like the signs at 2,000 are more important than the bison, because that's another entrance to the city.
No, I don't think so, because I I understand why you say that, but we're kind of catering around this area of.
So you'd prefer to have.
So I feel like if people are coming off of that highway to come in to write in here, Costco, i.e. Costco, it wants to be welcoming.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, then let me just be clear. Then there is an option that we don't do signs at the 2,000 exit, only signs at the Antelope Interchange without the boulders, and the difference is only $642.50. Okay.
I support that.
That's, that's close to our budget.
On the 2,000.
Because we can always add those later.
They could be added later. They're a little bit smaller than the ones that are gonna be at the Antelope exit to begin with. That's why there's less money.
So.
They could be added later.
If we did the Antelope exit in its entirety first, and then the 2,000 exit later to add those signs?
If we vote for that now, the difference is $642, which is not that much to find somewhere. Is that what?
I support that. Yeah.
Then we just put the 2,000 on the five-year plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather do that, because we don't have a clear answer on where we'd come up with 76,000.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm good with that, and then as long as we actually put it on the plan, I think 2,000 is gonna be changing a lot over the next few years, that area.
I would agree.
See that develop a little bit more before we start putting stuff in.
And we still have a freeway exit that goes right onto 2,000 as well.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess I'll take a motion to that effect.
How are we, how, okay?
It would be option two without boulders.
Okay, I move that we approve, wait a second. Where's the number for it?
This would be just West Davis Aesthetic Improvements, option two.
Okay.
Without boulders.
That we authorize administration to award contract for West Davis Corridor Aesthetics, option two, without the boulders.
Okay.
Without paying for the boulders.
Side note.
So that would be a separate project if we could get boulders.
Is that correct? Asterisk?
Without including in this project bid. Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
A party.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, that one is decided, and I am excited to have that go forward. That's.
I'm excited for the bison. It'll be nice to have one whole exit area completed.
Okay.
Instead of a little here, a little there.
Item number seven is proposed Ordinance 25-17 amending the Syracuse City zoning map to approve 1.7 acres of real property located at 3281 West, 700 South. It's currently zoned as A1, and they would like to move it to R3. This is that odd little piece of property that was a UDOT remnant, and this has been discussed before. Is there any further discussion on this particular property? If not, I'll take a motion.
I motion that we accept the proposed ordinances 25-17 amending the Syracuse City zoning map for approximately 1.7 acres of real property located at 3281 West, 700 South, agriculture A1 to residential R-3 applicant Landon Costley.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is part of the Shoreline Development Agreement, Part 5A, and this is in two parts, which I believe we can take an action together, correct? Okay, so this is in two parts, and let me explain the two parts. Part A would be taking this one parcel out of the development agreement from the Shoreline Development Phase 5A. Part B would be proposed Ordinance 25.18 amending the zoning map for approximately 1.5 acres of real property to make that, take it out of the RPC zone and move it to A1. This would be a down zone.
This is so nice to finally see this on here. Oh, my goodness, this property, we've been waiting for this for a minute, and this is this is turning this back into a horse property, if you, if the rest of the folks to my left don't know that, yeah. It's, but it's zoning it back too, so they can legally have horses on the property, and it's wonderful to see this on here.
Would you like to make a motion then?
I would, if if nobody else has anything they would like to.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to move that we approve the proposed amendment to the Shoreline DA Rezone from PR, from RPC to A1, and as well as the Part B to that.
Uh, part.
Well, so part A was the development, taking out the development agreement, then part B is the rezone.
That's what I said.
Okay.
Then in that case, I'll second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. That property's now A1.
Congratulations.
Applicant in the audience, good luck to you. Item number nine, proposed Ordinance 25-19 amending the Syracuse Municipal Code Chapter 10.75.30 and 10.30.20 E1 pertaining to Planned Residential Development PRD zoning. Noah, can you give us a quick recap of this one?
Yeah, the proposal is to be able to put ADUs, accessory dwelling units, in the PRD zone. Planning Commission reviewed it. They're recommending, no. We've reviewed it in our work session. The applicant is Mike Bastian. But yeah, I don't know if you have any other questions. I'd be happy to answer.
Nope. I'll just begin by saying I think this is a horrible idea, and I I hope that we do not do make this adjustment.
I do have a couple of questions. What what is the difference between the RPC zone and this zone? Why why is there a difference?
So one of the biggest differences between the RPC and the PRD zone is the PRD allows townhomes. RPC doesn't, but the the RPC does allow a similar housing type than what you're seeing in some of the PRD developments, especially the single-family portions of the PRD developments, where an RPC might have a lot as small as 3,500 square feet. And if you read through the RPC, they do allow ADUs, but the lot has to be bigger than it's in the reports, 5,400 square feet, I think. 52, thank you. So that's, that's part of the logic that the applicant is is asking, you know, I think he's willing to limit the PRD, if they were, if it were allowed into the PRD, I think he's willing to have some qualifiers on there, like lot size or something like that. But the thing we have to consider. But the thing we have to consider as a city is whether or not there's going to be room for parking and the added people and overall density of a development. There's some give and take there.
The parking is, uh, set to a three car garage though, based on the ordinance, is that right?
Yeah, that could be a qualifier or a minimum lot size or both.
Oh, I, I still not understand the distinction between property that's quarter mile away, half a mile away.
Yeah, most people, when they drive through a development, they don't know what zone it is. And if you're looking at a single family home in a RPC zone with a third car garage and an ADU, that's fifty-two hundred square feet, or if you're driving through a neighborhood that's on PRD with the three car garage on a fifty-two hundred square foot, that, there's no difference in the actual end. But the, the difference in a PRD area, you may have townhomes nearby, and the overall density may be slightly higher.
But the density is simply people, it's not actual structure, I mean.
So an accessory dwelling unit is not considered a unit of density per se. So they're, they do add people, but the principal structure is still the unit of density. If that makes sense, it's a little bit confusing, but, um, it does add more people. And when we count number of units per acre, uh, for an overall development, like for example, Village at the Bluff, it has townhomes, and also on the south end, it has some single family lots. The, the overall density, um, is probably only four or five, which is very similar to RPC, it's just the housing types a little bit different. And then sometimes the townhome areas have more people and obviously, if you were to look just at the density of the townhome area, it's probably closer to, you know, ten or twelve maybe, units per acre. But because of the southern part of it is single family, it lowers the, and they have some open space and stuff, so it lowers the overall units per acre down. So it's all, all relative. Most people, when they drive through a neighborhood, don't look at a neighborhood as a whole, what's on the flat and subdivision and what zone it is, they usually just kind of determine what they're seeing right in front of them.
Is, is there an inconsistency with the fifty-two hundred, uh, square feet from the ordinance? And is it fifty-six hundred in the RPC? Is that right?
Uh, I'd have to, let me, I can pull up the.
I'm just looking.
The packet. Yeah, what does it say in the packet? I forget.
And item number nine in the summary says ADUs are allowed in an RPC at fifty-six hundred. And the ordinance is proposed is fifty-two hundred.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I mean, if we were interested in looking at this, I would recommend making them the same, just for administrative purposes.
I, my thinking behind this is, I, I don't like the inconsistency that's there. So i- if they were not changed, I would not go for this. Uh, I do think that there is some reasoning behind this, uh, allowing, uh, an ADU to a property like this could allow a, uh, family to come in and purchase a property that they would not otherwise be able to purchase. Uh, that would allow people to come into Syracuse that may not otherwise be, uh, it may not be open to that. And would also provide, uh, an additional dwelling unit, which would be different from an apartment, but a similar kind of arrangement uh, without the, the issues that have arisen from the apartments that have come in. You have a, a family that owns a, a property with potential other people that are there that would be under the, under, the oversight of those, uh, property owners. Uh, I don't see how this adds to physical density very much. It may add a person or two to a location which may be there anyway. Uh, I see this as an alternative to apartments, uh, that is, at least the reasoning makes sense to me. If the reasoning does not make sense, I'd like to hear why.
I, I'll chime in there. Uh, Brett, I, I appreciate your reasoning and I understand the logic. Um, I will respectfully disagree on a couple of points. Uh, number one, when we have a interior only access ADU, then that's very hard for any form of deliveries. They don't have a front door, the second pro, property, nobody knows where that is, it doesn't bear a second address. So that's always a challenge. The other thing is that, in this particular case, the property in question that where the applicant is referring to, uh, already gained additional density, um, that is already built on the basis that he would not have qualified for that density had this been factored into the equation. So we're giving him additional density after the fact by allowing ADUs. Now, the other thing that I would like to point out is, while there is a technical allowance for uh, the fifty-six hundred sized lot or larger in RPCs, we do not have any that were designed uh, from the insta, from the onset as ADUs. It was an allowance that after the fact, if somebody wanted to modify a property to have a mother-in-law type apartment it within the same dwelling, it would be allowable only if the lot was large enough for that. Uh, I, it's never been used, and I'm against that option, but it was there. So I think that more consistency would be to make sure that that never happens in the city, because effectively what we're doing is we're creating illegal duplexes. We're creating a duplex apartment for, a house four-two where they are not authorized because they weren't proposed in the original. Um, this was proposed, uh, this is also the one project where I get the most complaints for dense lots because it has more dense, uh, buffer zones between houses than we have ever allowed in the city. So we're already at a higher density. Um, and, and I feel like we're doubling that with the remaining lots because they've had a hard time selling the lots. I don't think that's the reason to allow an ADU because they have struggled to sell the lot at the price that they proposed.
Well, and, and, and I think that it does, even though, even though you may initially have someone that, you know, maybe rents out the accessory dwelling unit uh, and is the primary occupant, when they sell that, if it's ever sold to an investor or anything like that, like Dave said, it's going to create illegal duplexes. And the, the already dense PRD, especially with townhomes and adding a PRD to a townhome is definitely going to, is definitely going to cause parking challenges. Because if you've got one family unit or, you know, renting the main unit and then another family unit renting the ADU, you, you're going to have the potential for more cars that can, that can fit o- on the property. So, uh, I, I mean, I, I'm concerned with, with the density. We've had a, we've had an outcry from citizen, citizens that they, they want less, less density, not more. And so I, I, I don't see any benefit for us adding more density to a PRD zone.
So.
And that may be the case, but I, I still don't understand the reasoning with the, with the three car garage. Uh, there should be parking that's there, and if we're dealing with ADUs, uh, we keep talking about illegal ADUs, well then outlaw them totally, because why is that not creating a duplex on any lot where that's allowed?
Because it's permissible as long as the primary occupant is, is in part of the, the building.
I don't think the ADU gets a three U, three car garage also.
No, it gets.
No.
It gets.
No, I'm sure.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna be captain obvious, because that's what I'm known for. Have any of you driven through there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the thought of allowing any, any more vehicles to be piled up in that neighborhood is insane. It is so hard to get through there already at any point of the day, let alone after work, when everybody's coming home or on weekends. It's, it's, it's a nightmare. It's a nightmare.
It, I think you, you'll see that especially apparent when we get into snow season, we're telling them, none of them can park.
Park on, exactly. And it's so dangerous for those kids and at summer times darting between those cars and people driving like jerks down those roads. Uh, it's a nightmare.
And my point, my comment is that I just feel like Syracuse has turned a corner here, and we don't want to continue that trend of identity overload. We don't want to keep doing that.
Well, I think that, for me, it's, I think there will come a day when we'll be looking for more places to put people. I don't think that day is today.
Well, and.
It's not tomorrow either.
And remembering what we have coming in the next five years, you know, we're far from that.
So, yeah, I feel like everybody's had a chance to weigh in. Do I have anyone willing to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we decline proposed ordinance twenty-five dash nineteen, amending Syracuse municipal code, chapter ten dot seventy-five dot zero-three-zero, uh, pertaining to the planned residential development PRD zone.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Okay, that will pass or is declined four to one. Item number ten is proposed ordinance twenty-five dash twenty, repealing and reenacting the Syracuse municipal code title four, chapter thirty uh, pertaining to cemetery regulations. This has been a great deal of discuss, discussion on this. Um, the logical, uh, option here is that we totally, uh, reenact the code, uh, because there are some significant changes. Uh, do we need to go over those at this time? Or are we okay with what we did in the last work session?
Uh, I mean, are we saying it's the same? I, I just wasn't in the packet. All we had was a factual summary.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we haven't changed from the, what was in the work session.
There, there were two issues raised in the work session. One was increasing the penalties for second offenses. That's in there.
Yeah.
The other one was that, uh, Jordan wants to be buried with his clothes on. That's now in there as well.
What about me under the tree? Rude.
No, no Jennifer under the tree, sorry.
I meant this, just so you know.
Okay, so I guess, my only issue is I, I didn't get to see it, but.
I wasn't, okay.
I, I think I would like to actually look at it before I approve it.
Um. Um.
I, I mean.
It's in.
I, I would, I would fully support that. You know that we do have.
I have a summary of.
A couple of people considerably, uh, upset about the management of, without.
Could we just have somebody read that, those changes to us?
Yes, could I, Colin will do that for us.
We could bring those up. I would appreciate, just so I can see the changes.
You will agree, Jordan.
I, I know, I hope I will.
I, I'm happy to do that.
I, I try not to approve.
Go ahead.
All right, the, the original language on the interment of human bodies only was to the effect that nothing other than a human body can be buried in the cemetery.
Human remains only.
Yes. The revised version is only the remains of human bodies together with burial clothing and accoutrements may be interred in the cemetery.
Okay.
That was for.
So you can keep your clothes.
I appreciate that, because.
The other one?
And what's the violate, what's the, what's up in the fee? What's the fee?
The increased penalty, the original paragraph said up to five hundred dollars for per violation. Now there is additional language that says, for any second or subsequent violation, persons or companies that violate any provision of this chapter shall be subject to a civil penalty not to exceed one thousand dollars per violation, plus the actual costs incurred to, by the city to remedy the situation or violation.
So my petty self, okay, just hear me out. I feel like anything that happens to any headstones by a company should automatically warrant a cleaning bill. Like.
I think there's.
If you leave any marks on a headstone, it should automatically warrant a cleaning bill.
Well, doesn't it already address that? Because they're responsible for correcting any damage they caused.
Wow, so we just.
So there's no surprises.
We just said remediation was only on the second or defense. That's what I just heard.
The first one was five hundred.
It was five hundred, but without remediation.
Yeah.
Up, up to five hundred for a first violation, or a second or subsequent violation, up to a thousand.
But do they both include any things that have to be fixed?
They both include repairing the damage or paying the cemetery personnel to repair the damage, yes.
Okay, as long as that is in both of those.
It is.
Um, we, we have some damage over there that needs to be repaired. I, I have received more pictures yesterday of a different one uh, that is damaged. Turns out it was my uncle. Also driven over.
Do I have anyone who's ready to make a motion?
Me.
Go.
I move that we approve proposed ordinance twenty-five dash twenty, repealing and reenacting the Syracuse municipal code title four, chapter thirty cemetery regulations and its changes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That posts, or that passes unanimously. We now have our second period of public comment. If anyone would like to bring to our attention something maybe for our future agenda, if not, we can, uh, move into our I don't have the other agenda for our RDA meeting. Do you have any public comment? Okay, I will close public comment. And can I get, uh, Cassie, will you pull up the agenda for the? Thank you. Okay, so we will now move temporarily into our RDA meeting. Uh, this is, I call this meeting to order. Can I get, uh, motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two is consideration of a possible action to authorize execution of the proposed interlocal tax sharing agreement between Syracuse City, RDA, and the Gateway uh, Public Infrastructure District PID number one. Uh, this would, uh, this has already been talked about and in place, but it is a formal uh, agreement that the RDA will, uh, repay the PID.
So I, I have so many problems with this right now. Um, first of all, there was no, where was this two, like, where was the conversation two weeks ago when we were discussing this and there wasn't really buddy, anybody here with us? Um, if you wouldn't have moved forward with this, we did our part. We did our part. We, you guys moved forward with it because we agreed to terms. And the pool having changed up.
No, this one isn't the pool. This is, this one is.
This is the PX hit.
This is the CRA that we created a few months ago.
So this is the one we were talking about earlier.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's.
Oh, then you don't want to hear my side of the story this week. You guys go ahead, shit.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I give you a quick update?
Yes.
The version of the agreement that was in the packet had some bracketed areas. They were highlighted in yellow.
Yes.
Those have all been resolved. The only two remaining issues are the effective date on the cover page, which cannot be determined until the market study is complete.
Right.
And that same date in the text of the agreement. So all of the issues have been resolved. It's now as you saw it, but the yellow brackets are missing except for those two things.
So this agreement has to be in play, council, this agreement has to be in place so that we can allow that bond to go to market, so that we can proceed. So I would ask that we take a motion to, uh, to authorize this execution of this agreement that we have been working on for, uh, quite some time.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nick.
Okay, that, but ma, motion passes four to one. Now, the second item on our RDA agenda is request from Matthew Swain of Perry Commercial to amend the first amendment to the agreement of the tax increment rebate for the EOS gym. And Jen, if you'd like.
Okay, I'll continue now, thanks. Talking about how this pool was off balance in COVID, I was not on the city council when COVID hit. And we discussed this since I was on the city council.
Right.
So COVID had nothing to do with the pool size. I understand at the last, our last meeting, we discussed how there was something brought up that, um, the developer, uh, building the pool, said that the other ones were this size and it was okay there. Well, those other EOS gyms didn't have an agreement with our city. And our city agreed to certain stipulations under a legal binding contract. Nobody showed up beforehand to say, hey, there's a little bit of a holdup. It's only after the deadline does anybody care to come forward and say, hey, by the way, we didn't make it, but we want you to make an exception for us. And I feel like this is what developers do all the time. And I'm so frustrated over this. It's not hard to communicate. It's not, it isn't. You just pick up a phone, send an email, it's super simple. But the fact that none of this was communicated until well after it was supposed to be done, for me, that's ridiculous. And it's, and then holding it to us, telling us that, well, we set up a thing with the city, so we are doing great business with the city. I love some of the little shops you have in there. I, I patron them frequently. But coming to us with this, that there's a problem on your end, and then trying to make us seem like it's, we're responsible for it, it's a no for me.
Hey, would anyone else like to comment on this?
So I, so I'll, I'll comment a little bit. So I, I understand that there were delays in moving forward. And I think that is the portion that probably was impacted by COVID, because gyms were not allowed to be open and things like that. So there, there was a delay, but we addressed that by extending the agreement. We extended it, we set new deadlines, we increased the incentive. And then the new deadline was not met, and the stipulation of the pool size was not met as well. And so, yeah, I, I, while a- again, I think Shadow, uh, Shadow Point Shopping Center is great. I think it's, it's great to have good, good partners in the city. But I also think that we both have to be, uh, we, we both have to uphold our end of the agreement. And I, I just don't see that that, that was done in this case.
Okay. Anyone else?
I mean, I I think they've largely said it is, at the end of the day, contracts matter and words matter. Um, this was reviewed by both parties, it was signed by both parties. I agree that the uh it, the part that is as far as building. That has largely been remediated. I mean, they are definitely out of the ground now and and I love that. But if I I do not see where they have fixed the pool size. I mean, the reason why we kind of went into that was to allow. Um, hopefully some of our student athletes, we don't have a pool for them in the city. This, we are trying to get at least somewhat of a re- a regulation sized pool in there to fulfill a public need. For which we are spending public dollars to to incentivize. And that need was not met. And and it is, I've never even heard someone make an offer to change it. It's probably too late at this point. Um, we've tried to be upfront, but at the end of the day, the agreement was not upheld by the end of the recipient. I I I guess I I wish I could go back and say, well, I didn't really look at this part of the agreement. Or I didn't like this part of the agreement, so I just didn't do it. That that would not hold up in any court of law that I know of. And so I I'm just going to say at the end of the day, words matter. And in this case, the words were the the stipulations and the other words were the signatures.
Okay.
It's just a great disappointment. I feel like the reduction in the pool size has to do with wear and tear on the pool and to discourage the high schoolers from using the pool. I think it's a, it's it's sad for our city that 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 didn't happen, it was promised.
Any thoughts, Brett?
I I guess I have two concerns. One, it's already been raised as the notice issue. Um, this is something that may have been able to be addressed had we known beforehand. The second one, which is even more challenging for me is, is that if we go back after the fact and and make adjustments. That sets a course of dealing from the, for the city, in my opinion, where it would be hard for somebody else. Had they had somebody come in in the future. And uh if a similar situation arose where uh different terms had been reached or different. Um, performance had been done, they could point to another situation, say, well, you did it here, or you did it here. Um, I feel a bit constrained, even though some of this may be minor, some of it may not. Uh, I don't like the the precedent that is being set moving forward, so that's my opinion.
Uh, having heard from all the council, can I get a motion?
I move um that we deny request. For the First Amendment to uh agreement for tax increment rebate for the EOS gym facility.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
No, it's.
Well, it's denied, it was the motion, so that, okay. Uh, item uh number four is to adjourn from the RDA meeting. I will now adjourn us from that meeting. And resume with our regular business meeting. At this time, we have uh mayor and council announcements. Um, I'll start with you, Brett. Do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay.
Gosh, I don't have my, we've been doing great work with the CTC and um addiction recovery and prevention. Yeah.
Okay.
Paul?
Nothing for me.
Jordan?
Yes, I have something.
Go ahead.
Um, so coming up in April, on the twenty sixth, we will be having our. Annual disaster preparedness exercise at eight AM. We are asking, you already laughed.
Well, because you schedule a disaster and I really think that's a little bit funny.
I sleep through stuff like that, I'm sleeping through this.
So anyway, so we will be having a a um disaster scenario where we are going to have. Uh, red envelopes strategically placed throughout the the city. Every district will have a red envelope with some puzzle pieces in it. And we are going to see which districts can find all the red envelopes in their district slash areas and put the puzzle together. Uh, what we are hoping to do by this assessment is, first of all, practice uh the Rapid Disaster Assessment Program. Uh, also known as RDA. We are also trying to work on the communication so that in the event of a real disaster. And instead of red envelopes, we have, you know, fires or injured persons. We want to be able to assess those areas, get that data, get them to the people who can communicate it to the city. So in the disaster, we know how to allocate our resources. Um, that's really the critical part here. So super excited. We ask everyone, please participate. We will also be testing out our Everbridge program, also known as Reverse nine one one. Uh, a call out will be going out the night before. So uh listen for that. If you don't get that call out, it means either you're not registered or your information is incorrect. So if you don't get that call out, please double check that information to make sure that the next one we do. Well, hopefully not a disaster. Um, you will get and have the information necessary. Uh, there is also a post online as part of the city newsletter. Uh, for all this information, go ahead and take a look at that, it is there as well. So super excited to do this and as a city, we we are always trying to plan for the future and this is part of that. Make sure we have one.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I got a couple of things. So the CTC had a, they were invited to the police department to do a mental health class there for the police officers. And some of Clearfield's people came and I got to attend that and it was wonderful and amazing. And they do great things and I love that our police are starting to folk, like they're putting a lot more focus on their mental health. Um.
So your mental health has improved as well?
No, but, well, that's that's irrelevant. Um, but um, and the other thing was I have been stopping in some of our cute little new stores here in Syracuse. And before I offended you, sir, like I said, there is many adorable little places that I frequent in that parking lot. And there's a cute little solstice store, so if your wife's like tea tasting, they do that there. And that's the only place in Syracuse that really does it. So send your wife on a little ladies night, they do that there, it's so wonderful. Um, and there's a couple of other, and I went to Morty's just recently, if you haven't been there, go there, it's delicious. Their good creamery is always on point. Yep. Um, oh, in Old School, they have some great stuff going on there. Those are just the places I frequent lately.
The only issue I have with their good creamery is it's on my regular walking route and I'm not losing weight anymore.
So just so you guys know, I I set up a thing, so if you are ever around on Thursdays, stop by Thir goods at three. And I'll be there. You can come hang out, have a conversation and an ice cream. So yeah, that and um the dog park, the, I keep getting questions about that. The grass is still not rooted in, folks, so you can't go there yet. Um, but when it does open, again, my apologies to the police department, good luck on that. Uh, that's all I got, though.
Okay, uh, I will draw your attention to the fact that I sent an email today after I. Uh, attended a meeting with Wasatch Front Regional Council. Uh, a couple of details from that meeting, I'll just let you read the real details. But it addressed the antelope uh bike trail and in that meeting, so that's an update. And uh also a note in there regarding uh possible alternative funding for parks that I've been working on for about a year now. And got some real traction with that committee. So still working on other ways that we can improve the city without uh using our own funds in every opportunity. Um. I want to draw your attention to the fact that we will have our budget meeting on Friday. So I hope you're all going to be there. It would be overly exciting. And um, other than that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned right before seven. That's awesome.
So our budget meeting will start at nine?
Nine thirty.
Oh, eight thirty.
Huh?
Here that uh.
Things at eight thirty.
My agenda said nine thirty.
You know, I was wondering where all of our city managers were at, all of our department heads, and then you guys all popped in at once.
It is nine thirty.
Okay. Well, Bill.
All right.
I know.
No, just.
So so I looked at the invite.
The agenda says nine thirty, you need to, yeah.
Yeah, they they outlive invite.
Well.
So it's nine thirty nine.
It's nine thirty.
Okay.
Time for it to start.
And you guys.
Schedule nine thirty.